We're missing a few.
Yeah, we are.
We're good.
Who are we missing? Brady, Ricky, Mark.
Ricky and Mark.
One, two, three, four, five, and Justin.
And Justin.
Let's, we hot now? We're on? Okay, let's just go and get started. It is 2:02. I'm gonna call the City Council Work Session together and I'm gonna turn this over to Alan Barnes to get it started. We have, I know at least one council member will be here, probably two in the next few minutes. But we're gonna go ahead and get started, because we have a full agenda today.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what you have, what documents I've given you are the first draft of potential bond projects that we came up with after the, or during the December 17th meeting. You see, not only the project, but the estimated cost and a very brief description of each. I will point out that there is one project that was discussed that was inadvertently left off, and that is the improved baseball fields. That was inadvertently left off, and I think the estimate on that was about a million dollars. If you'd like for me to, I'll go through these and discuss each of them very briefly. Under the Enterprise Fund, we were given a target of approximately fifteen million dollars. The water well field with the development of two wells, the pipeline back to the airport, and the airport ground storage is estimated to be at approximately six million dollars. To replace the utilities in Long Street, that would entail bringing, taking out the Thurber brick, going back with asphalt, with the exception of in front of the rec center area, park area, that's estimated at 4.2, 4.25 million dollars.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Is that the above and below ground construction, or is that just?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
According to Mr. Williams, it is.
Okay, okay. Just want a clarification, sorry.
And to continue with approximately fifteen million dollars, that would leave between three and five million dollars. We have ten sewer basins that are in need of repair. Nick estimated that that three to five million dollars would be ten to seventeen thousand feet of sewer infrastructure, including replacing the streets on.
Replacing, so you're not repairing or replacing?
Repairing the streets, yes. Replacing the streets to where they were. If you think about it, that's almost, that's between two and three miles of sewer line. On the next page, and I apologize for the formatting, it was done rather quickly. On the next page, the general fund, the target was about eight, was about twenty million dollars. Eight million dollars was talked about for the multiple function facility that would house the library, senior center, gymnasium type rec center, as well as cultural event, other cultural events. Phase one of downtown is about three and a half million dollars. That would make surface infrastructure changes as proposed by Gateway Planning. Phase two of downtown is approximately three quarters of a million dollars. That would do the physical repairs and physical changes proposed on Belknap from College to Long and on Columbia from College to Long. We also discussed two million dollars for the completion of the trail system. One of the other projects was to update the current rec center that we estimated to add a million dollars. I asked for an estimate and received an estimate for the Harbin Road extension from South Loop to Cedar Street. Mr. Williams estimated that at five million, two hundred seventy-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars. I have not looked at his engineer's opinion of cost, other than to get the bottom line. I haven't had an opportunity to review it to see if something is in there that shouldn't be, or whatever. Because we do have water and sewer lines in place, so it's essentially just building the street and the runoff of the stormwater. And then the baseball field.
But with stormwater, they'll come out of, stormwater comes out of.
They can, yes.
So would that five million include stormwater or not include stormwater?
I believe it does.
But it wouldn't need to be on the bond, though. So it wouldn't have come out at twenty million bucks?
Doesn't have to, that's correct. The baseball fields, we estimated at approximately a million dollars as well. And honestly, I don't know what the total amount on this is. Again, what we did with the general fund is we simply went through, listed all of the projects that were discussed. We had three or four that we didn't have estimates for, and retained engineers' opinions of cost on those. And so that's where we are right now. You have from January the 12th to February the 11th to call the election. What I would recommend is that we get as close to the projects that you want to recommend in the election as we can today. Give staff an opportunity to go through, shore up the numbers, and come back to you guys, probably at the committee. Now, it'd probably be, we'd probably have to do it before the committee meeting on the, what is that, the 20th, 19th? So that's where we are. And I'll give you the official staff response, and that is staff recommend, respectfully recommends that we go through this. The council decide which projects they want to put on the bond and which they don't. So, Mr. Mayor, that's my presentation.
Well, it's the bond money, the twenty million bucks, those projects add up to twenty-one, twenty-one million, five hundred thirty-two thousand bucks, not county and streets, which is blank. So we start at twenty million, so I'm assuming that's what you're recommending? Or do we go to, we add some money to that street project and make that twenty-four, five million?
When we, when staff was directed to, or requested or however it was, to poll the council, the council seemed to have a consistent appetite for about a twenty million dollar bond. We're not recommending that we go beyond the twenty million dollar bond. What we're recommending, or what we, where we are is, these are all of the projects. And we've got more than twenty million dollars for the projects, so we need to either pare those projects down or decide whether or not you want to add more to the bond. And I will say that state law currently or now says that each individual item that is on the bond and will use the multi-use facility, for example, it will say multi-use facility, eight million dollars. This will raise your property, your abhorrent property taxes by so much. And then you'll go to the phase one of downtown. Phase one of downtown is three and a half million dollars. This will raise your property taxes so much. There, there's, that was done for the sake of transparency. To me, I question whether that's transparent or not. I liken that to going to Walmart for a loaf of bread and ended up having a hundred dollars worth of stuff in your basket. So I think, I think if we stay where the council wants to be and how we have to present this, I think that's the easiest way is to just stay where everybody wanted to be and do it the way the state says to do it.
So what's the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, help my memory, the fifteen million dollars out of the Enterprise Fund is not gonna be part of the bond package?
That's correct.
Correct.
So it will be covered by the rate structure?
Well, that's what we have, and Monica said that the rate structure, as it's, as we approved it, will take care of up to fifty million dollars in debt service.
Okay. So we can do COs on that as necessary in increments, or?
Yes, sir. The reason I think, or that I would recommend that we do COs is if you go to a bond and the voters reject it, then you cannot issue COs for three years. COs and, or project, capital projects in the utility funds or enterprise funds have no impact on abhorrem taxes. It's all done by users, paid by users. So there's really no reason to put anything, any utility type enterprise fund project on the ballot. There's nothing to gain for us or the citizens for that matter.
Okay. I want to make sure I understand also, just now we're having a conversation, on the twenty, fifteen million dollar utility fund, what would the support that includes backing out some revenue or increase maintenance for these new projects?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so the fifteen million wasn't all the revenue. It was, because support that and have some additional repairs.
That's my understanding with my conversations with Monica.
Okay. And real quick, I mean, so I, when you say there's more than twenty million, just quick at the back of the envelope math, I came up with twenty-one million if we add in the baseball field, so I'm not sure what more we need to consider, other than if we just want to pursue the twenty million.
Well, what I was, what I was getting at is, is this was, the intent for this document was to put what we discussed at the 17th in front of you. But, but also to give you the opportunity to say, we want to cut the downtown phase one out and do streets.
Okay.
Or we want to reduce the rec center improvements from a million to five hundred thousand and put two and a half million dollars on the, on the trail. Or, you know, and I'm just pulling that out of the air. But that, again, I know that the council wanted to do, make a significant stride in street repairs. That's the reason I left street repairs blank on the sheet, was because, I mean, do you want to do the Harbin Road extension? Do you want to do street repairs? Do you want to pick and choose? I mean, that's, that's the reason I think we needed to have this meeting today.
So Alan, the utilities on Long Street, so obviously the utilities under the Enterprise Fund, does that four point two five million include rebuilding the street as well?
It does, and the reason.
Should be paid out of the, out of the Enterprise Fund?
Yes, sir, because we're gonna be, we're gonna have to tear up the entire street to replace.
So that would not have to go too long at all?
That is correct.
Okay. So we can do other streets in addition to Long?
That is correct.
Okay. We do have Harb, the extension of Harbin. Does that make, would that be an extension of Harbin as a two-lane road or a four-lane road to Cedar?
I believe that is the four-lane road, which is what the future Thurber Fair Plan calls for, what I would suggest. And I'll clarify that with Nick, but what I would suggest is that perhaps we make it a two, if this is done, that would make it a two-lane road with intent to make it a four-lane road. It would be a two-lane divided roadway. It basically looks like a.
It does today?
Yeah.
And, but we have, we own the right of way as it for four lanes?
Yes, sir. It's either a hundred or a hundred twenty foot right of way, and I don't remember what you did.
So we would, you're suggesting doing like we do South Har, Harbin currently, south of Washington, to the South Loop and take that across the South Loop?
Yes, sir, that was, that was what was discussed.
Rather than making a boulevard, not going to the north near Tarleton?
Oh, no, sir. What I'm saying is, is we can do the two inside lanes for the boulevard with the median in it. So all they have to do in the future, when the traffic increases, is to widen the two outside lanes.
If there's not enough traffic for four lanes across the road?
I'm just wondering if what you do is you put two lanes with the ability to put on both sides and not put the boulevard in there, because that's gonna be a cost as well. And put the boulevard and do the other two lanes and the sidewalk won't expand?
Yeah, you can do it either way.
I guess my only concern with doing that is the, at whatever point, you've got to come back and widen it. You have to completely redo stormwater at that point. You're gonna be completely redoing sidewalks at that point. Maybe you can set sidewalks out to the edge of the, you know, initially, but the stormwater would be.
There, there may be some way to do the stormwater. I don't know. That, that would be, actually probably be a freezing knuckles question.
Well, and I would think that that would be, I don't know about how much doing it back and forth, if that's gonna be, if we're doing that, it's pretty much because development is gonna go there.
Right.
And so do you want to not just show where it's gonna be, and you've got your lot lines, where they're gonna be for the commercial development that's gonna go through there and connect back to allow the city to expand in its.
If it's a huge difference. If it's, if it's five, five point three million to do the whole thing, and I don't know, it saves a million dollars now. Goes back to the same conversation we've had. What would Harbin Drive have been five years ago? You know, you look at ten years and you need to expand it.
Exactly.
And instead of one point three million, that, whatever the number is now, it might be three million dollars at that point. And citizens are gonna be saying, why didn't we do that to begin with? So I think if we're going to expand it, just expand it the way it needs to be.
Well, it's obviously gonna be commercial there, and then not far from there is a two hundred something acre track that could easily be residential as well. It's in the city, lives currently, has water and sewer going right by it.
I think if we were going to include the extension, it might as well be done.
Right.
Right, at the first time.
Mr. Mayor, I've asked the city secretary to have Mr. Williams come down here and to be sure he brought his engineer's opinion of cost, so that.
Okay.
Is there a way to recapture any of the user fee costs associated with the commercial development there along Harbin?
There is, there is. Approximately two years ago, we discussed the possibility of having impact fees in which a developer would pay for the impact of his development on the streets. At that time, council did not have the appetite to do that, but as far as I know, that is the only way to, for a street user to be. Unless you just charged everybody through their water bill like Fort Worth does.
Well, you gotta do that and get permitted, as, only be done voluntarily. You can't, you can't charge us.
Yes, sir, I believe that's correct.
Yeah, I asked my wife that, and she said, oh, the city of, is it Abilene or somebody?
Abilene went through that, yes, sir.
Yeah, they had to make payback to the city.
That's correct.
Justin, to answer your question a different way maybe, normally when a developer goes in and the right of way is there, the developer builds that street to our specs for the development of his property. Now, it might be piecemeal, but you would get a section and a section and a section. We've talked about that on the extension of Wolf Nursery Road. That seems to be one of the holdups, because nobody wants to go, nobody wants to do all of their portion. That might be another option on Harbin when it is developed at some point in the future. The developers are gonna be responsible for that unless we go in and do it first. If we do it first, then it belongs to the city, and the developer then has no obligation, if mine, I think, has no obligation to reimburse us. And we've done away with pro-rata fees for utilities, so that's out the window too, so it's all on the city at that point.
Well, unless you do a Pid or bid.
Correct.
A business improvement district or a.
Public improvement district.
On the thing, and then you can recapture X amount, whatever you want to charge for it, from the property owners alongside the road.
Which is, which is what we should.
Produce some of the dollars needed for a five million dollar expansion. At least in the business.
Which I think is what we should be looking at doing.
I agree.
I mean, it's, it works just like a TIP. I mean, this is a way for us to make the development happen and open up an area of, within our city that is open land, raw land, that we need. And to make it happen, but we can get some of that money back. And I mean, it works just like a TIP. As the development happens, it funnels in and it pays it back forth. And then that allows us to be strategic and forward-thinking and use the amoeba effect that the mayors use to move that and do that somewhere else. So that we're not at a complete standstill again in ten years, like we are now trying to re-ignite some of this.
Yeah.
That should have been happening continuously.
So that particular funding mechanism, is that something that could be used for the downtown district too?
Yeah, it actually can be. That's a really good question.
I'm sorry, what was?
I mean, I've seen it used in some downtown areas too.
What was it?
I know they use it, but did they not use it in?
Ped?
What'd you say, man?
Ped, P I D.
Candy.
So that would be a, I guess the only thing is, can it be tied back to a voter-approved bond election?
Because they can be in the same areas.
Well, it's, it would be separate from a voter-approved bond election, but it would provide some of the dollars so you can reduce the amount that you get on a voter-approved bond.
Gotcha.
Play the math.
Or use the same units in other areas.
Yeah, use it in other areas, whatever.
Okay. Well, I think the concept, though, tell the developer to put in all those costs incrementally isn't dead dog. It doesn't happen in Texas anymore. The big cities are bringing that stuff in, and then they're doing some kind of chargeback through some other type of mechanism to their business as they develop the business. Because it spur development. I mean, I've involved in a project in Fort Worth, and what they do is they bring all the major streets in around the project. And the city then, or the developers are responsible early inside the project, and they end up causing, they call a TIP, and they end up building inside of it, and they get the money back long-term. That's how you spur development. You don't sit there and say, well, you're gonna spend the money first where you come here. It just doesn't happen. It doesn't happen in Texas.
I agree with that. And if you think about it, with, let's, let's say it is five point three million dollars. With it, that's, the way to look at that is, that's an investment. Because as you, as you expand Harbin Drive, you're gonna have the businesses, you're gonna have the housing developments on down Cedar develop, and your abhorrem is going to go up correspondingly to your investment. That's, that's, that's the theory of it, but, but if you think about it, what you're doing is you're opening hundreds of acres that right now we have, don't have access to development.
Yeah.
And, and so is five point two million dollars or five point three million dollars a good use of the fund?
My question about it wasn't about that. It's, I just wanted to make sure that, was there a four lane or two lane across the road? And so you answered that part of it. So, thank you.
What is your opinion of cost, Nick? Is it four lane?
That's two lane.
Two lane.
Two lane, how Harbin is today, or?
Like it is today, yes, sir.
On the south side? The five point three is?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Does that include stormwater also, Mr. Williams?
It does not.
Question.
It's without modeling any of the stormwater.
Okay.
There, looking at some of the contours, I felt comfortable not including that number because I, you can tell there's a, there's a big contingency in here for that.
Well, just down, just down Cedar Street, is it next to bend back down to the south, or is it, I can't remember what direction it is. You know, that first bend back to the left, there's a huge stormwater problem right there. I mean, that place gets flooded. I hear about that all the time, about people getting back across into town. When are we gonna fix that? So, and I would imagine Harbin Drive will add to that plus that problem.
I believe that's our road bridge fee. Thanks for that, Kevin.
Good luck.
You what? It's, it's not on my radar. Is that something?
I was thinking that was around, so I'm sitting with it.
Yes, sir. This would all stay on the east side of that drainage area.
Oh, it is on the east side of that drainage?
It's all on the east side of that drainage area. There is still quite, quite the slope that comes down. It's about a twenty-foot drop from the extension all the way down to just connect into Cedar.
Well, I drove down there this afternoon at lunch, and there was a utility truck down there working on high line wires that are, from that side, rather than off of Cedar. So I don't know, is there any kind of projected development that y'all know about?
No, sir.
I mean, he was, there was two big, well, I was two or one, there was a big truck with a bucket on it.
No, sir, we've not been contacted by, by anyone. Now, we did receive a call today from an individual who is interested in developing a piece of property, but literally that's all the phone message said.
Did you talk to that same person?
I did talk to that same person. They'd like to set up a meeting sometime later this week.
Yeah, I was, I got a call and just asked about that. I think it was the same person. Okay, really, I guess the point, unless there's another question about that.
Does that two lane, is that follow the Thurber Fair Plan?
No. He has a question for me.
I'm sorry.
Okay, does that two lane, does that follow the Thurber Fair Plan?
The extension is not shown on Thurber Fair Plan on our map right now. What that does is.
So Thurber Fair Plan doesn't even include part?
Okay. It, it literally takes it from that end, dodges the, the, there's a high line wire there, structure, that was a high line wire. Dodges that structure and then just tees right into Cedar. If we wanted to make a gradual S curve or however you want to develop it, you know, those dimensions do change.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
This may have been asked when I stepped away, I apologize. So what is the cost to do?
So what is the cost to do four lanes?
Uh, you're gonna add about sixty percent to that.
Seven and a half, eight million dollars.
Right. In, in the, uh. The reason I'm stalling is because it depends on what you do with the media, how wide it.
Well, and then, so the other costs associated with it would then come from the utility fund? And how much is that?
There are no utilities included in this stormwater.
So what does it cost to get it to Cedar four lanes?
Looking at about seven and a half or eight million.
That's it? There's no other cost?
For the roadway?
Yeah, so, but.
That is my best guess without modeling any kind of stormwater. And that's not an extension of water or sewer either.
Right, so that doesn't, so you can't extend.
Water and sewer.
Then you can't.
Where it matches.
It doesn't do any good not having utilities go over to Cedar, right?
Yeah.
That's fine.
From a development standpoint. There's ways to get it there off the backside, doesn't necessarily have to parallel. Just keep it consistent. Yes, sir.
Okay, let's, let's have this conversation here as well. Nick, I want you to hear what they're saying, what they're talking about.
Uh, well, the, so the, if we did go with four.
Yes.
You're gonna go from four lanes down to two from the loop to Washington and then back to four. So it's not gonna be a real good flow there.
When you think about what Harbin carries today, it carries a massive amount of traffic today. Uh, and so.
Yeah, there would probably be a greater need to go to four from South Loop to Washington than there would be south of, of South Loop.
And, but. Well, when Wolf Nursery was built, I understand they built half of it and then when Walmart and some of those other items came in, had the ability to expand it, so certainly.
So you could build it two lanes on the one side of the.
Right, and then expand it at some later date if you wanted to.
Right, okay.
You, you wanna get the property acquisition.
Is the right of way there for four lanes?
City does not own any right of way.
Well, it says the right of way is in place.
Yeah, we do. I thought that was all private property from the end of Harbin to Cedar.
Really?
It may not be.
I'd say that we had an existing easement.
Okay, that's the first I've heard of it. Apologize.
It also says utilities are in place.
Water and sewer are, should be.
There are water and sewer in that area, but they don't go.
They're not in that right of way, well, what would be the right of way? I don't think.
This is where we really need to have a map.
Yeah.
So I can show you where, where the existing utilities are located.
I have a feeling that developers might be willing to grant the easement to get the project done.
Are you ready?
Fountain for cost, the, the cost easement is gonna be a big issue.
They've already told us we could mark out the right of way.
Does the, does that five three, does that include an estimate for the land acquisition?
No, sir. It's just construction. Okay, well, construction and design.
I think we should probably have the answer definitively is whether or not there's, is the right of way.
Yes, sir. And where the utilities are. They cross higher up. Just utility stuff. Also, I'm happy to show them that's really. And I think maybe in the future. But I thought we can. Uh, we, uh, Mr. Mayor, we will work on obtaining the answers that, that, to the questions that have been asked. Uh, shouldn't take us more than, what, a day probably?
Right.
To, to come up with the answer, so we should have them for you to, to, day after tomorrow or late tomorrow.
Okay, so I'm gonna kinda change the direction then a little bit. The question comes up, is it gonna be twenty million? It's obvious it's not. So we have twenty-one, five listed on here, not counting the street projects we talked about. You know, that, this last bottom line here, so. So the question is, I think we start with, you're gonna have to back into, what is our comfort zone of ask? Is it twenty million, is it twenty-five million, is it thirty million? Cause that will dictate some of this, these answers.
How much is twenty million to give on the?
Well, if you took out the seven hundred and forty-five thousand for the second phase of downtown, that puts you at twenty million, seven seventy-eight.
But what's the, what's the, what's the rate, what's, what's the rate of that speed increase?
The rate increase on twenty million?
Ten cents.
It was ten cents.
It was fifteen, I forget.
I, I believe it was.
Twenty million, I think.
It was, it was.
It, it may have been fifteen, but I think it was ten.
I think it's ten.
I've asked Stacy to go get Monica.
I think, well, we've all talked about a penny a million is about right.
Penny or two million.
That was a million, I think.
So at the poll, are you voting individually or are you voting for the twenty million?
Individually.
You vote each project?
So if, if we're trying to, I guess the question is, what, what is the number, is it twenty or thirty? I think is what you asked, but, but if we're trying to stay under twenty, in my opinion, the million on the baseball field and the million on the update to the rec call could be paid out of the, the venue tax.
Out of.
Out of the new venue tax.
Correct.
It could be entirely out of the bond, we can go issue a C O for the, off those, off the.
That funding source, or two funds, part of the, part money too as well.
That'll support.
And, and part of, the reason I like that idea is, one, that was a promise we made to citizens, that this is gonna be used to improve those facilities. Two, if we don't end up with a multi-use center, we're still gonna need to spend a million dollars on the rec call.
Agreed.
And so that, uh, but if we tie everything in and things don't work out, then we're sitting on our rec call for three years and we're sitting on baseball fields for three years. And people are saying, why aren't y'all approving anything with the tax we just passed?
So.
I would say pull the two million dollars off.
For the baseball fields and the rec center and the existing rec center?
And the rec center remodel.
I'd agree with that.
Doing.
I think that's.
And leaving.
Actually what that venue tax.
I think that's exactly.
And leaving the seven forty-five for phase two.
Right.
Leaving phase two, seven hundred and forty-five thousand into the downtown.
Is that all it is?
That's what he has in here, so. He had three point five and then seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and forty-five thousand.
So our first meeting was, and I'm probably, y'all probably talked about that before I got here, but our first meeting we had on this, it was like seven or eight million.
We'll have to wait till he gets in the conversation. So I'm gonna put it back over there for right this minute and you're saying.
That gets us down below twenty million.
So you take the million out for the ball fields and a million out for the update of the existing gym. That puts you at nineteen, five, two, three.
Yep.
Before you add any streets?
Before you add any streets.
And, and if we are able to do, if we're able to do a pit or bid or whatever you want for South Harbin extension, where we could recapture a million of that or two million of the five million?
I think what you're gonna end up having is.
Could you not then that two million dollars would, if you not put that into this other street project?
Well, we have no land acquisition on South Harbin. And I think if you're gonna get free access, free easement or right of way, you're not gonna be able to come back and charge the person some kind of a fee on top of all that. They gave you a million or a half million dollars of property and then you charge them another million bucks and some kind of a fee, I think you have to do some kind of trade-off.
Be one of the trades.
But, so I'm saying is, that's not, we'd have to add that money back in for land acquisition to the project if you're gonna start charging fees to pay for the project.
I think the land, well, I don't wanna speak on the earth, but I don't think the land would be that difficult.
To get.
Well, I, I can tell you, one of the owners just told me that I'd do it, but I'm not gonna end up paying a user fee as well to get access to the property.
I think they're willing to do it, yeah. I don't think there would be an acquisition.
Yeah, I don't play that.
There won't be, but my point is then we can't turn back around and do a pit or whatever. Now we might do a TIF.
And that's what, and, and that's, that's another extension that exists.
So what if we did a TIF then?
We could extend a TIF down Harbin, we talked about that when we initially did it running it down there and then you capture all that new growth, which then again.
It's all the growth in.
It's all the growth.
Then it's all.
And that really.
And you're capturing that and add value, probably some of it.
So you're gonna pack of a.
Huge jump income, go straight to that.
And then you turn around and. But there way of doing it.
Which may be the way to just to take that five million out of that.
And pay for the project.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the, you're, you'll each get a copy of this, but, but on a twenty-year level payment, uh, ten cents would, would get you about right above nineteen million dollars.
Ten cents.
Ten cents would. If you wrapped it, which means not a level payment, your payments are lower in the first part and not in the back, a lot of that would get you almost twenty-one million. The same ten cents would, depending on how you structure it.
You see, I know you have other projects like, we have a contract with a, with two developers, two landowners now to put a street in. We actually have water and sewer run through their property, they at least signed a contract, the city did, to put that in. And the agreement was, there wouldn't be some kind of a fee charged back to them for that property or that part of the city's part. Now, the street they would get, they'd pay their half, or I guess it'd be a third, a third, and the city'd pay a third. But there was an agreement that they wouldn't be charged with water and sewer utilities to do that. And that was done, Alan, what, twelve years ago? Something like that. And I know that, that development is gonna, they've already cut trees and pushed stuff around, looking to start that development.
That, that development is gonna move forward.
And so that street would be, I mean, you went out there and looked at the property one day. The kind of street that's gonna be out there, it's gonna have, it's gonna be residential, I think, isn't it? You went and talked to them. So that street's gonna be a two and a half million dollar project? I would guess.
It seems high.
It seems high?
For a, for a local residential street.
I guess cause utilities are already there.
Right, yes, sir. Probably close to a million dollars.
About a million?
Yeah, that's what I think.
And that, that request, I mean, we've got a contract says we'd do that within so many years and we hadn't met our contract requirements, so. And that, that project, they're gonna call the note on that for too long, I think. So you're suggesting then that we take out the gym renovation and the ball fields and pay those out of the hot funds, new hotel, the venue tax money. And that will support how much, Alan? Our estimated new venue tax?
Uh.
Will do two million bucks?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I think it's three something.
So we could, we could afford that, I should ask the chair of the committee.
I was trying to remember if it was three or four.
So we could pay for it.
You do have two million, still.
And still has a.
Apparently safely, even since during COVID, there were, you know, not knowing what the future looks like for sure. But then still have leftover for extra operations, whatever, whatever, we may tie that every now and then.
Okay.
Ricky, are you proposing to take those off of the bond and then do C Os for them?
Yes, sir.
And use the, uh, venue tax to repay the C O? Okay.
Yes, sir. So there will be no, no impact to the.
No impact on, on property tax and no impact on the bond level.
Correct.
And then you have the rec center.
And you have a improved facilities that we promised you.
And the.
So if the rec center fails, you're.
You still have.
So that puts us at nineteen, five, basically. And we say that ten cents would support how much?
Nineteen and a half.
How much?
Nineteen and a half.
Now, that's, ten cents is what that is then.
But we don't have streets yet.
Well, unless we do the, uh.
We have long.
Unless we do the TIF on.
Longs in there.
No, we have long in there, that's right, and we have, um.
As long as not gonna be part of.
Longs.
That's right. But I mean, that, but we have street repairs in it, the citizens will see that we're doing some repairs, some reconstruction, actually. And it ties into our downtown plan. Gets access to downtown from Harbin, I mean, from Carlton.
I struggle with the Harbin extension, I guess, 'cause it puts you back to the same thing. I don't know how well that's gonna be accepted by taxpayers to increase their tax rate to pay for the extension. It needs to be done, there's no doubt about that, but.
Thank you.
But what's the plan if, if that fails?
Well, you're not gonna lead to Harbin.
Then you don't redo Harbin and you still got that two hundred and fifty acres in there for.
What does that do to the developer?
Unless they go.
I guess the developer could, could.
Three or four.
Could do it themselves.
Yeah, I'm promising, I'm promising you that.
I'm worried about how much support does it get.
Think you look at.
I don't know.
It, it's gotta be.
No, I, and now.
I agree with doing it.
I, I agree with your sentiment. Possibly using that five million to redo a bell nap or something like that. Is there, is there a creative way? Like when we first started talking about doing Harbin, we still remember some of those very first conversations of that, I guess we could do that. But is there a way, is there a way besides this that we could fund that?
Well, we could do.
Maxed out there.
Well, the question is, on a TIF, if we added the TIF, the bonding entity would have to come back and say, what's the potential growth or what's the anticipated growth? And we could do a C O against a TIF for that same project and do Harbin Drive.
You could, you could either create a new TIF or extend TIF. You would be at one A B C, you'd be at one C.
But that would be continuous to the current.
They just take it across Harbin Drive.
Yeah, that's what I say, it'd be one C if you, if, if that's the route you wanted to take rather than create a new TIF. I think your, your revenue generation, if you extend the TIF, would be much greater. Would, would cover debt better than just having the, the increment there. Does that make sense?
What do you mean by increment?
The tax increment.
Okay. So instead of, we could get more, we think we could raise more money to a TIF than we could to a bond.
I don't know about more, but yes, sir, you could.
Well, it's, it, it takes the burden off of the.
Takes the burden off the general public.
It does.
It makes it, it only happens as your.
Doesn't put it on the developer, but it puts it on the development coming.
It puts it on, it puts it on the final project.
It puts it on the final project.
Which, which they understand.
Yeah, so we could do that.
So then the size of it happens.
The challenge is just the first two or three or four years that it takes to get that developer going.
Yeah, that's pretty challenging.
So how sure are you that the development is coming?
Part of it, but we gotta feel more comfortable now where we're sitting in that situation than we were a few months ago with signed executed leases on.
That's right.
It's gonna be wildly successful retail in that area.
You develop, you talk to the, the two landowners.
They, they. And if, you know, who knew what was gonna happen this year? But I truly believe, and if you look around our city where there is available land to develop, we have to find a way creatively. And I like, I like the TIF, I like not putting it on the general public, I like, I like how we do that. But we have to find a way creatively to get access to that land, cause there's currently no access.
So.
So every developer, you dead end into going that way, you dead end at the hotel there or you dead end into the shopping center on that side. And you, or you turn and you go down the Lock Art and it turns into a dirt road. And so to get access to any of that, which I think is where we're gonna have, we're gonna have to get.
That's the future.
That's the future. We're gonna have to find a way creatively to get there.
Agreed. Okay, so the question, I, so it sounds like what we're trying to do is suggesting to do is take the five point two off of the bond, move it out to a TIF and get direct staff to start working on that and then come back and look at, put some of that money back in for street construction.
I, I feel comfortable with the ten cent number, I just think if we spent four or five million dollars on a bell nap or a, an ollie or a fry or a somewhere like that, that's what we should. I think I, I can only speak for myself, but if I'm gonna add ten cents to my thing and I'm gonna see that amount of impact, that's a no-brainer to me.
Okay, so.
And you're not asking me, while I'm a huge proponent of doing Harbin, but you're not asking me as a taxpayer that won't benefit from that. I put myself in some bail suits that won't benefit from that. You're not asking me to pay for that, but you are improving my Bellknap or my Ollie or my Frye.
Okay, does that, so we take it back and do those same dollars or something similar to that?
I think, I think the nineteen twenty million is a good number.
Okay, so we look at ten cents and we try to back into the nineteen five with the ten cents. And so we take the five, two, seven, eight out. Is that right? And we'd fund that out of a TIF. We're going to instruct staff to do a TIF, to analyze a TIF, see what we can do there. And then we're going to come back and put up, and we're going to back into the nineteen five in street repairs. Is that what we're saying?
Before we get into that, I have one question on the phase two on the downtown.
Okay.
Steve was back in.
Alan?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
The, the phase two on the downtown, seven fifty, you said?
That's what Nick's estimate was, yes, sir.
I was thinking.
I think you're thinking about phase three, which was the section.
Everything on the east side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Phase two is.
Phase two is the streets, right?
Columbia.
Coming.
Okay, I thought that was the several million.
No, I think that's phase three.
That, that was our first, uh, first blush estimate. And, and I asked Nick to go back to look, to be sure at his numbers. I asked him, when I saw these numbers, I said, wait a minute, you told me it'd be millions of dollars and now you tell me it's three quarters of a million dollars. And he said, yeah, I went back and I looked at those two blocks and, and this is what I feel that that, or those four blocks, actually. This is what I feel that the number should be.
So one thing that I thought I heard it say about clarity on that on that phase two, if that includes ripping up the street and replacing the street because of utilities, is that an enterprise cost or a general fund cost? That three quarters of a million?
I, I think where he's coming from with a, a general fund cost is the utilities can, can replace the, the street that they are under. So if you go curb to curb or you replace the curbs or whatever in your project, then, then a portion of it, yes, is enterprise fund, but a portion of it's also general fund. That's the way I understand it.
So that's just the general fund portion of the.
And it's the.
Would you have Nick come back?
Because then I'd have to ask, what's the, what's the enterprise fund cost?
Yeah.
I'd have to reel back in a bit.
We can just set your hook on.
What about, well, how is that different than the long street number?
How is that different?
I think that included a lot of sidewalks and things like that.
The three, the seven forty-five?
Yeah. The long street didn't include.
The, the long street, of course, is longer. It, it's. Sorry, that was not, that was not meant to be the way it came.
It's a long street.
Nobody else got there.
All right.
Definitely not called wide street.
And that's one of the reasons. I, I would have to have Nick on his way back down to discuss his opinion of cost, not only on those two streets, but on the long as well. Because I, Mr. Haskett, I don't know.
Okay. Well, I guess if it's a similar situation to long.
Why does it big difference?
Yeah. Why, why would we include that as part of the enterprise cost?
Well, Alexander Road to Graham Avenue is what, ten blocks?
Yeah. I, I don't know, but.
Problem.
I bet it's ten blocks.
Longer than that.
Things longer than that.
I think it is, just because some of the blocks are not standard blocks. They're extended because there's no cross street.
Yeah, let me just look it up on Google.
I think probably the, the issue of the cost here, the seven forty-five, has to do with the aesthetics of that more than it is the roadway or anything like that. It is the expensive sidewalks and all the, and the trees and all that kind of stuff.
It's also putting water and sewer below the street. Yeah. That cost is.
It just seems very cheap, so I want to make sure.
It's a good question.
Yeah.
Well, and.
Hey, if we can do it for seven fifty, I'm willing.
Well, and the thing of it is, is I mean, these things need to happen. While we're doing it, I mean, it may be different from one period to another, but that, you know, we call it downtown phase two, but that's only relative to the downtown project. I mean, this, that, that still needs to happen. So if it happened inside the enterprise fund, then.
It's thirty-three hundred feet from Washington to Harbin. I mean, to Alexander Road. And then from, and the other was going from where, Columbia? Columbia to Long Street. Let me try to get the right one here. I'm going to just do Bellknap since I know it's there.
Yeah, so that's a couple of miles.
What, thirty-one hundred feet?
No, it's two thirds of a mile.
Two thirds of a mile.
And it's a thousand seventy feet from Charlton to the, down Bellknap to the.
To Long Street.
Thousand seventy feet.
Oh, it's about a third of the.
Not from Washington. Phase two go over there.
I thought we were going, I thought it was, where, okay, where is the north and south in Alexander?
It goes from Charlton to Long Street.
From Charlton to Long Street. That's thousand seventy-one feet times two because there's two streets. So that'd be twenty-one hundred, that's twenty-one hundred linear feet. So that's two thirds the cost of Long Street, except for Long Street has utilities under it in that cost because it's in the utility fund.
Okay.
This does too.
We're waiting, we're waiting for Nick. We're waiting for Nick.
Am I having questions, man?
Just want to tell them we need to stay in here. Sorry, man. Welcome back. We want you to feel needed.
I'll just set up shop right here.
That's exactly what we thought.
Can you explain your opinion of cost for Bellknap and Columbia on phase two of downtown? And from where to where and so forth?
I wonder if I printed off that email. But I did break down the costs associated with water and sewer, brick and lighting and sidewalk and curb and gutter. So I do have a breakdown for that. Taking a moment to pull that up.
I'm sorry, it's seven hundred ninety, went to the Long Street, seven hundred ninety dollars. It's seven hundred ninety from Charlton to Long. So sixteen hundred, seven ninety, seven seventy-eight times two, so the two streets.
Compared to Long Street at three thousand.
Thirty-two hundred.
Okay. A portion of Bellknap is in phase one.
Okay.
This block here is in phase one.
Good point. That's a good block of that.
I believe I asked Nick, based on the drawing that we have from Scott, to, to do, to give me an estimate from College Street to Long, not Charlton to Long. So that may be where the disconnect.
College to Long.
College to Long.
That's what this drawing.
Yes, sir, that's, that's the original drawing.
Shows College to Long Street.
Okay.
However, phase one would take it from Washington to College. And so that would leave, what, two blocks? From Charlton to Washington.
Well, that's the big difference. And I went to Charlton.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then Columbia Street would go over.
No, Columbia Street would also go to College.
Just to College?
Yes, sir.
Now, what I was hearing was two A.
And the street would go all the way up.
I'm sorry?
If this is street, it's all up and stop the Brady.
No, sir. No, sir. Yeah. Doesn't make any sense.
That's what you were asked to do.
You want to go up to Charlton.
Because Long Street's a separate project in all this.
If you don't go to Washington, you'd better turn, should you? Right, and go back to the square on, on College.
That's right.
Let, let everybody know what that is, Nick.
So I, I sent Mr. Barnes an email that has a breakdown for Columbia and for Bellknap. So Bellknap from College to Long and Columbia from College to McNeil. That's what was on the exhibit for phase two A.
College to McNeil?
Which one's McNeil?
College to Long.
College to Long.
To Long, yes, and two A, I apologize, to Long Street. The, the utilities in Columbia are new from McNeil to College. So the city's already replaced the, that section of water and sewer. And that's why I don't have that included in my estimate. But I have a breakdown for each section for brick pavement, intersection improvements, if you've seen that exhibit and you see the crosswalks within those, lighting, landscaping with trees and irrigation, and then the utilities broken down per linear foot. Bellknap, I estimated three hundred and sixty thousand and Columbia, three hundred and eighty-five thousand. The total is seven forty-five. And I can break those down for you independently. The reason that the Bellknap piece is not as much is because that brick pavement is already existing. And if you wanted to utilize that, obviously, if you didn't want to, the cost would go up. But I factored in sidewalk, curb and gutter and the accessibility pieces, the demo and the reconstruction. You know, when you get downtown, you have curbs that are not anywhere close to ADA accessible. But that came in at about eighty-five thousand just for that piece. Curb and gutter sidewalk ADA compatibility on Bellknap. Lighting, I just had to guess, if you had twelve posts per block or six per block, that would be about ten thousand dollars each or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Landscaping, I found some rough numbers at approximately thirty-five hundred a piece at twenty trees, that'd be seventy thousand dollars. And then the utilities I broke down for sewer, four hundred linear feet at seventy, seventy-five dollars a linear foot, water, five hundred and twenty feet at fifty-five dollars a linear foot. And that breaks it down to about sixty thousand dollars. And that puts the total of Bellknap at three hundred and sixty thousand. And I went through that same process with Columbia. The cost per unit are the same, the, the distance for water and sewer is a little bit different.
So the road would have to get ripped up to fix the facilities?
In, yes, specifically in Columbia.
So tell me, Columbia goes to where? From Long to where?
To College.
I don't understand why they picked Columbia because they anticipate that's where the gym will be, at the end of that, be the entrance.
I do.
So the question that I have, and I think that's what Ricky's looking at, is you're going to stop it up here at the Mason Lodge and Brady's office and not go to Washington. So if you're going, so you're going to have some directional issues. People are going to stop and turn, they're going to go down College more, get back downtown rather than going up to Washington.
Because if they're stopping at Columbia.
Get in front of that. To tie College.
One block of College.
So.
Frankly.
So the question.
I figure out a different way to do that.
Nick, and guys, one of the things that Ricky's talking about, I think it's a valid point, is if it's going to stop at College, Columbia. Why not tie Columbia or Columbia and Bellknap together as well?
Do that one block of College.
As well.
Between the two.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Between the two.
I think that makes sense.
Especially if you're doing one way.
Between those two.
I agree.
That's your, that's your path back to downtown.
Yes, sir. I agree a hundred percent.
Isn't that already brick?
It is already brick.
I think it is.
There might not be a lot to do there. That may be why I explained to you because it's already brick.
Bellknap is brick.
Yeah.
In that area.
Or College.
There's, there's, there's plenty to do there. We, we walked the block and so sidewalks and things like that that
So.
Would want to clean up.
Yeah. So your question is, would any of that come out of utility fund? And if it's, and whether it does or not, your point is, we're going to have around five billion dollars extra taking the Harbin Drive, South Harbin Drive out and putting it in a TIF. So we've got some money, so could we just say we're going to use that? And one of the things we're going to put in there is that connecting Columbia and Bellknap together. And the rest of it then we put in towards other projects, other street repairs.
I guess, are there utilities in that block of College that would need to be replaced? Or would it be a fairly inexpensive project to?
Yes, almost everything downtown is still going to be your real clay sewer and cast iron water, so. Within that block, you'd want to add that distance using those linear feet.
So I guess that Justin's question is, can we just pay for it out of the utility fund?
Sure. Absolutely.
And, and do we pay for all of that downtown business part of it out of that same fund?
So then maybe we ask them to do the aesthetic part. Does the Does the taxpayer want to do the aesthetic parts of the project?
Well, you also would want, you would, I would think you'd want to put in the sidewalks, you'd want to put in the.
Yeah.
The.
That's what I mean by that, not all those, yeah.
The lighting, et cetera.
Yes, sir.
Doug, would that phase two of downtown fall under the general category of street repair? And you put five point three million dollars in street repair that we took off of the Harbin extension? And would that fall into that area and that would take that seven forty-five off? And we, we could put five point five in street repair or whatever. Would that, would that qualify for that?
Well, I would think it would. But what Justin's trying to say is, the bond, we're asking for street repairs and we could fund that out of the utility fund. There's funds, there's dollars there to do that. You know, to, to raise, instead of raising the, whatever we came up with on the utility fund, fifty, I'm, I'm going to put a fifteen million?
Yes.
Borrow sixteen million and pay for this other part of the project.
You can?
Yes, sir.
And then we have more money then to put in other repair streets in town.
It's whatever the will of the council is. On any of these projects.
My fear is that if we're not careful, we're going to load our utilities to the point that people are going to balk at the price of water and stormwater and sanitary sewer. Since the, the taxes are an issue, but utilities can be an issue too, especially for commercial that we hope to attract. If, if we add too much to that, those rates continue to escalate. We built some of that in, but if, if we continue to add to it, then we may, as George Brown used to say, we may overload the freight train.
Am I mistaken? Is, is not the rates that we talked about utilities in this, in the numbers you've given based on what we've already approved?
That's, that was my understanding, yes, sir.
We, we could borrow more than fifteen million.
Yeah, we could.
We could borrow fifteen and still have money for additional repairs, which.
Based off of what we've already approved as far as the rates go.
That's my understanding.
In the interest of transparency, if, if the purpose of that project is downtown revitalization, I think we ought to let the project have a vote.
And take it out of.
Because it includes a whole lot more than utilities.
Well, that's what I, that's what I would say.
He said, take the utility part out.
So I, I would say that the road repair and the utility costs are part of the enterprise.
Right.
And have them decide on the other part.
Do we know what that?
Well, he's got a breakdown.
Well, it'd be the difference of whatever you said.
Ask me a question.
You know what, do you have the, the cost of, I guess, phase one and phase two, or we just talked to phase two?
The lighting sidewalks and landscaping, right?
Yeah, pull utilities out. And what is the, what's the aesthetic part of it?
No, this is the one I put together last night. It's three hundred, three hundred and forty-five thousand for Columbia. And utilities are about sixty thousand in Bellknap, so it's, you know, it's enough, three hundred thousand. So it cuts a hundred and forty-five thousand, yeah.
I think for grand scheme, I think that's a small number. There's really getting down to the street.
No, that's just the cost of the utility.
There's not a whole lot of road work to do there, right?
Well, if you just.
Put back what you.
Right. If you do that, then you have a patch. If you look at that, that block on the south side.
There's still no that piece of the wall there.
Right. You've got an asphalt patch and brick. So what?
So, so that we're creating consistency about what we're talking about. What is the utility cost and, and putting back the road as we want it?
You take out about two hundred thousand on Columbia, so you're well over a hundred thousand. a little over a hundred thousand on Bellknap and a little over a hundred thousand on Bellknap and it looks like a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand on Columbia.
And this is just phase two A?
That's it, yes, sir.
So, then on downtown phase one, there is a component of that as well, correct?
There is.
I don't know, I just, I hate to ask though. General ad valorem tax to pay for, you know, if it's of the first two phases, it's a third of it or even forty-three, even if it's twenty-five percent of it, I mean, that seems. We're using a general fund ad valorem tax to pay for utility costs?
Utility fund's supposed to pay for utilities.
That seems unfair.
Can.
I understand what you're saying. I was thinking, but I kind of understand what Alan's saying too. I mean, a lot of this is, we're so, is we're, we're being careful that we're not saying, well, really, the whole idea is to beautify downtown and revitalize downtown. Let's just throw it all in the utility fund because we can.
No.
Because it's not really, we ultimately, we, we have to do something with those utilities. And so, this is the town to do them if we're gonna do all of that, though.
One of the things, one of the things that you can do is you can charge, for lack of better terms, an assessment to the utility fund to cover the costs of the, the repairs that are paid for by the bonds and use that to supplement the bond payment.
That's what I said at the workshop, another question.
Well, but, but it still is, it doesn't, it doesn't, your property tax still goes up ten cents.
Correct.
Or, or some amount.
Some, yeah, some amount.
For that project.
And then I pay higher water bill.
As well.
To avoid.
But that's still what we're doing if we do it that way.
Yeah.
Ad valorem pays for it, the utility fund pays it back, so you end up with a balance back in the general fund, which is funded out of the bond.
Which lets you lower your tax rate, right?
After you've raised it.
Well, not if it's.
I mean, it's like the school district did, right?
If we were, I'd be perfectly fine with that if we were saying typically to do this, we would need ten cents. But the way we're gonna structure it, it's only gonna affect it nine and a half cents, what?
Can we issue a bond that way?
I don't know. I wouldn't wanna say, I wouldn't wanna fully fund it with the bond and then move money over to the general fund and spend that money somewhere else. Cause you're just, you're done with this in that way.
If I may, Nick, how critical is it to replace the utilities downtown? If we were not talking about the downtown revitalization? On a scale from one to ten, how, ten being, I gotta fix them tomorrow, one, eh, I got twenty years to retirement and the next guy can worry about it.
That study, that study told us that, didn't it? We paid eighty thousand bucks for them to tell us that.
It did, but I don't remember what it is.
So, it, it's a low priority, uh, or let me, let me restart. It's a higher priority because if you're going to replace the street, then the equipment used to do that will damage the utilities.
The reason.
That's why it's a high priority.
But if we weren't replacing the street, it would be a low priority, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Low priority because of the consumption or because, you just mentioned clay pipes and cast iron floor. Sounds to me like that's pretty old stuff.
But there are prob- I, I think ultimately what the report will show, if we were to pull it out and look at it, is yes, those are clay pipes and, and galvanized steel. But we got other places that are worse than this, uh, much worse than this.
Yeah. Isn't that a relative?
Yeah, and, and the point I'm making is if, if we were not going to redo the streets in downtown, if we were not going to, to redo Bellknap in Columbia, we would not be having this conversation about utilities. So, where I'm going with this is, let's ask the voters, hey, do you wanna do this? And, and keep the utilities in this because i- it's a package. Most cities do that. They don't break them down, utility fund and city fund or, or general fund. It's, this is a project that includes streets and sewer and water and sidewalks and whatever else. Let the voters decide it.
And you're only breaking out two hundred thousand?
Like, what, what cities do that?
Well, they, when they run a bond to, to repair the streets, they replace the utilities as well.
And they have to put out a bond out of the utility fund.
Right, that's correct.
Are you sure of that?
That's why we did it in Saxon.
Because the state law says, the utility is supposed to pay for utilities. It's not supposed to be funded by general fund. If the utility is supposed to cover your costs, utilities, and that's been the issue since I've been on council for ten years, is we haven't charged enough money to pay for utilities. And, but the same, same logic is true if we decide to redo Charlton Street, the whole length of Charlton Street. We got a utility component, we got a street component. And the priority then would be based on what you're gonna do first. Is the streets more prop- important or is the utility more important?
How, since we're bringing up the downtown, we feel like this is being dishonest. How is that different than saying, we need to, Long is ugly and we need to fix it up? What is the, was the difference between that statement and downtown revitalization?
Part of the issue with Long Street is the condition, the overall condition of the street, the amount of traffic that's on it. But then the utilities that are under it are extremely old. And if you're gonna, as, as Mr. Williams said, you can go in and resurface that. But if you come back later to do the utilities, it damages what you just did. And it's very difficult to get a patch back on a street and, and get it level like you can if you're laying the whole street. And you can see that all over town where we've had to go in and make cuts for various things. The, the difference in that versus the downtown, in my opinion, is we're trying to energize and revitalize and get our downtown back viable again as a retail district. And we're willing to invest the money to do that. Long Street, on the other hand, carries a lot of traffic and we, we recognize that, like Harbin. We're trying to improve that traffic flow and improve the accessibility. Versus the downtown where we're trying to revitalize it and we're trying to keep, we're trying to get businesses and keep businesses here and improve the, the commercial aspects of our downtown area, district, whatever you wanna call it. Are we willing to invest the money? And then, and the other side of that is, are the voters willing to invest the money in that? Cause if you put this on the ballot this way, which is my understanding, it has to go on the ballot. It's a menu, if I understand that right, and that will be one of the items on the menu that you go yea or nay on. Is that right, Mr. Barnes?
That is correct.
And if the voters agree with us, then that three and a half million for phase one will be included in the bond. If they say no, then we may end up, instead of twenty million, we may end up with sixteen-five, for example.
And then you can't do it for three years.
It's not that you can't do it, you can't borrow money.
You can't, you can't borrow the money. You, you can't issue COs for three years if it's turned down at a bond.
That is correct.
You can come back after three years and do another bond or?
Actually, you, you, uh, the, you, let me verify, but I think you can do a bond every year if you want to.
Okay.
Since you're going to the vote.
I think you'll find that the voters' appetite is gonna be better when you're talking about ad valorem tax. I think the multi-use facility, people will see the benefit of that. I, I think for, uh, street improvements, that's why I suggested that about street improvements. Take that five billion from Harbin and put it into that. I think you'll find their appetite for that to be better than it will for some of the other items that we've discussed. Maybe wrong, the voters have certainly fooled me in the past.
Justin, I think, talking about the difference between this or Long, and if, if I'm wrong, you could replace utilities under Long without entirely redoing the street per, per, correct?
You could, but you're gonna end up replacing most of the street, redo both utilities anyway.
So, but there's.
It's not a good materializing.
There's a, there's a certain portion of that long that you're redoing just because you have the rest of it torn up and we'll go ahead and let the utilities back away.
It's a pretty small percentage if you consider all the connections. And the, the, the lines that run the, the direction the street runs. And then the cross connections that go both directions. You've, you've got a lot of, of cuts and patches and other things that make it very difficult.
I'm not saying it makes sense to not do it.
No, well. Could you? I suppose you could, but it certainly would not be, it would look like a patchwork wheel.
It's already done.
There are streets like that.
Like all these streets.
Or it'd look like it does today.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Anyway, go.
Sorry, Nick, I didn't mean to chip.
No, you, you guys hit a nail on the head.
Well, I guess, I guess my question then is, it comes down to values of what we think is important or not important. And if there is, I mean, is it, if we're replacing the utilities, I mean, these roads that we're repairing, and we feel like that's a better use of the funds, we can still ask them on the, on the ancillary thing. But getting the road fixed and repaired out of the utilities, I, I don't think that that's being dishonest or, or misleading in any way, shape, or form.
I, I think it's no different than, than having the general fund bonds pay for the utilities under Columbia Street.
Exactly the same thing?
It is exactly the same thing. What I've done is I've asked.
You probably end up with, but you're not gonna be able to reduce the M and L portion initially. So, at least a year or two, you're gonna be doubled it.
Right.
By doing it that way.
Uh, I've asked Stacy to go get Monica. I'm gonna have her call, uh, Eric Mahah to find out about the, the utilities under streets with the general fund versus streets on the utility fund aspect.
Would you call Eric and ask him?
But I think doing the rest of it, I think that is up to the voters. I mean, I, we don't, we don't have to do the lighting, we don't have to do the sidewalk, we don't have to do the curb.
Well, and I, my argument is, if we don't do all of that, we're gonna have to do the utilities anyway.
Well, we may not.
Cause it's not a. Now, that's, that's one of the. It's really, it's all up to the voters. The more you touch it anyway, for the more equal future.
So, so then do you ask them, do you wanna do it?
Have to.
And then if they do it, then we issue the COs in the enterprise fund? Come back and do it again? Just ask them what the, what is the general fund cost? And then have them go forward from there. Then we can tie down what the ad valorem cost would be.
Just make it simple and clean. I like simple and clean. Voters do too.
Yeah.
Put it on there, if they say yes, then great, we do it. If they say no, then we don't, that's fine.
Cause we, I guess we stay away from downtown anyway.
Yeah.
Correct.
And then the citizens dictate.
That, I mean, if they don't wanna spend, if they don't wanna spend, whatever, it's four.
Four point two.
Four point two million to revitalize downtown. It's not gonna matter if it says three and a half or four point two.
That's it.
Or three million, and this is the beautification part, the rest of it's gonna be, it's not gonna matter. These are gonna wanna spend money on. I bet you.
But on Long, you don't really have an option. At some point, you have to, and Long has to be addressed, am I correct?
Correct.
It's a very critical, so that's take, to me, I see that as just taking care of maintenance of, of existing city-owned street and utilities. As opposed to this, it's not a high critical, and, and is that correct? Mr. Williams?
I would tell you. Well, you're talking about, can it be a high critical from a failure standpoint?
Yes.
All month.
Yes.
Yes. I think it's critical.
There is, there, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yes.
So, I just, I think that it's a, I think it comes down to, you know, what do we, do we, as a council, see value in this endeavor? And if we do, because it means we've bettered the city. I see, I guess I personally, I'm not gonna create a silo of this Long Street thing fits into this silo, this fits into this silo, and I can justify one but not the other. I think that it all has to do with the betterment of the city.
To me, the issue of the enterprise fund is, we sat out there and listened to, who was it brought the project, the list to for utility funds projects gonna do? Circle Rollins or?
Pretty simple.
Can't, you were at the workshop, you said it out there.
Oh, yeah.
And so, they brought, they gave us, you, you, I kept showing you every time you had a project, I said, now we're two hundred and ninety-seven million dollars. And we didn't add them up, I said, quit adding them up, cause we'll never get there. When it gets right down to it, we're dishonest with the citizens. If we don't say, you're not paying for, Alan, I'm sorry, it's gonna cost you more money to run your water and sewer program because this is what we need. And we don't have enough rates right now to pay for that. We don't come close to doing that. That's a seventy or eighty-year project to come up with that kinda money. We're gonna, at some point, we're gonna have to be borrowing twenty-five and thirty million dollars every three or four or five years to do this. And it's, and for us to put that on the backs of the taxpayer as an ad valorem tax is a, is a violation of what I think the enterprise fund was set up for, both the state and federal law. It's intended, they're supposed to support themselves. They're supposed to pay for that project.
Well, and I guess the other thing, the way, the other way to look at it is, is what is, you know, if, if we invest four million dollars in downtown and it creates a boon both economically and through ad valorem and sales tax for the city, that's just less of a burden on the taxpayers down the road. Because then that can fund that three hundred million dollars of capital improvement projects that we got.
Well, that project should be funded through the utility fund. And what's our water rate right now for, for our residents?
Sixty-four, four seventy-five, or I had to ask Monica. Not in building, so I'm sorry, I don't know the rate.
Well, listen to what happens with the street, city down the street from us, eleven miles, twelve miles from this building. What is their water and sewer rate? What is their, what is their ad valorem tax rate?
Our one's about a dollar twenty.
And ours is forty-seven?
Forty-four.
Forty-four or forty-five, five.
Forty-five, five.
So, we're forty-five, five, and the reason they're in that situation is because they didn't deal with streets and water and sewer. I know, cause I, I, I know a person real well, that's a part of the bond issue and the repayment of that bond issue. And it's like, they borrowed some money and they didn't wanna talk about what the actual costs were. How are you gonna fund that? Because they weren't willing to pay for it that way. And one of the, one of the fears from the auditor was, they're gonna come do an audit on you and they're gonna make you do that. They're gonna call with them. Cause your fund doesn't pay for it. You borrow, they borrowed like seven million bucks or something for, remember they, they had a problem, their water shut down, remember that? Had gotten no water? They had to go borrow seven million dollars from the water fund. And the question was, you've got to raise your rates to pay for that, and they didn't. And they're trying to monkey around with how you fund it. Utility fund has to pay for utility fund. And Alan, you're right, we've got it. Boatload of requires we need to be doing. And so, what we're doing is, we're afraid to sit up here as council members and say, well, Judy ain't gonna like that because our water rate's gonna go up twenty percent. I'm sorry, water rate's gonna go up twenty percent, it's gonna happen. And hopefully, it won't go up as mu- much more than that because there'll be more consumption, cause we're growing and the new people buy it. That's part of the expansion of our, our city. But we're gonna have to do that because at some point, it's like the stormwater problem we have on, what's that street that goes down the hill? It's.
Springboket.
What street is that?
Springboket.
Springboket.
At how much is that project?
It was a million dollars.
Million bucks, do we have a million bucks?
No, not in stormwater.
And yet, we have houses all down that street that had water in the garages and up in the houses, a foot and two feet. And that street goes downhill, what, twenty-five feet down the hill? You'd think you'd keep it in the curb and gutter, but it couldn't, there's so much water coming down that street. We should fix that. We're causing the problem for that, those citizens. How many times have we have, we, when we talked about the water and sewer up and down, before we did the meth, what was it, uh, up and down Ollie Street? We had citizens came here and talked to us and told us, I have black water coming back up inside of my bathtub. That shouldn't happen, that's because we hadn't fixed the water and sewer problem. We have got to address, we gotta be honest with the citizens and say, we've got three hundred million dollars in projects. We've got to fund this stuff at some point. And I'm sorry, I just, I, it's emotional to me, but we've got to start doing, we can't nickel and dime this stuff. We've gotta start coming up with the dollars. And we're not talking about ten cents raising their water rate, ten cents. It's gonna happen, the sewer and water and stormwater's gonna go up. It's gonna go up twenty, twenty-five percent in the next some years. It's gonna have to. And what Monica's done is come up with something that we could live with that would find. It's going to have to. And what Monica's done is come up with something that we could live with that would fund fifteen, sixteen million dollars in projects. And a twenty-year note, right?
Correct.
So what, just think about that. That means in twenty years, we can borrow our next debt of money. We're going to borrow some more, twenty more million dollars in twenty years. What's going to happen? At two hundred and nine, it's going to be three hundred and thirty million dollars in projects. We have got to be honest with the citizens and say, we've got to start doing things to fix our problems. We sat there and held off for years and years until we had this study done. About these basin studies. Every time someone poop runs out on the highway, guess what? We've got a fifty thousand dollar fine or a fifty thousand dollar engineering fee to say, well, we've got to get it done fixed. Well, we've done all that now except for how many, we've done all the basins. It's close, right? Forget it. And even without doing all the basins, we know we've got two hundred ninety-seven million bucks. Now quit counting them. You don't want to quit adding them up. We're over three hundred million dollars. We've got, we need, in the next ten, fifteen years, we need to do thirty million dollars in projects. Three hundred million dollars in projects. We can have to do that, guys. And I'm sorry, but that's just the reality. And sometimes we're afraid to tell that to the citizens. I think the citizens want to know the honest truth. What is the reality here? And on ad valorem tax, I've talked to a lot of businesses in town, several, who said to me, you know what? I don't care if you go up my ad valorem tax twenty-five percent, thirty percent, I don't care. And my billion is going to cost me five thousand bucks or three thousand bucks for my business. Am I going to get three thousand dollars in business to pay for that? That's what I want to know. And that's what Justin was saying about downtown. Are you going to create more that's going to keep me from having to keep adding to that down the road? Yeah, we're wanting, that's what happened with, I don't know what we call it, Project CSN, it's called Washington.
Washington Commons.
Washington Commons.
Washington Commons. Look at that deal. That's what we're talking about with South Harbin. You know, if we don't do that, if we can't grow our business, if we can't grow this city. Just think, what would it take to cop to, over the next thirty years, to pay for three hundred million dollars in water and sewer? That wouldn't stormwater, just water and sewer, right? That's ten million more dollars than we're spending today a year, not counting debt service, not counting interest. Thirty million bucks in our current bill for water and sewer, our total collections aren't thirty million bucks. That means we have to over the dub, more than double our rates. To pay for what we currently know is in, some of it in critical condition.
Yes, sir.
We have got to start doing that. So I, to me, to worry about, and I'm sorry, I mean, I really don't mean to pick on you about that, but to me, to sit there and say. Well, we've already gone up. We can't go up again. We're going to have to. We're just going to have to do it. Pony up, let's be adults, put our big board britches on and tell the citizens the truth. Now, whether we fund the street, those two streets out of ad valorem tax, whatever, to me, it's a violation of the principle that the utility fund should pay for utilities. And we're in it. So it's, it's not the seven hundred thousand or the two hundred fifty thousand water difference. To me, it's the idea that the utility fund has got to, at some point, we say, here's what we're going to do, it's got to pay for itself. And that's just, that's, and everybody's got to pay part of it. Everybody he borrows takes water. And Monica did a good job of recreating commercial, you know, doing the whole structure. So that the, the average household doesn't get hit with the most of it. But I say, and Starbucks was a council member who was complaining about, someone was complaining about their water bill. And yet I went by and looked and there was water running down the curb in another center because of sprinkler system. Oh, my gosh, look at what my costs were. So I went to that guy and I said, do you realize, here's a picture. I took a picture of the water. Here's the reason your water's so high. It wasn't the rate, it was you're running water down the street. That's called, now we're going to put that in stormwater. Got to pick out, how to put that in stormwater. It's just a recycle through our system. We've got to be honest. Now, I know quit preaching. I apologize. Tell.
So, okay, so for phase one, phase two downtown, how much of that is utilities? I know you answered that, but I didn't write it down.
I had seven hundred forty-five thousand. That's just phase two A. I'm not looking at any of the other phases.
That didn't include the lights and.
But that was total. That wasn't, that wasn't just utilities.
That's correct. That included, that included everything.
If we're going to keep utilities out of general fund, period, and we just need to know what's utilities so that we can take that off the general fund.
There's a hundred thousand. There's a hundred thousand. That's it.
On phase two?
On phase two.
Phase two A.
I think it was like three on that one.
You said it was.
Pardon me?
Some reason I wrote down a hundred and forty-five thousand earlier than you said.
Forty thousand in utilities for water and sewer on Columbia and about sixty thousand just for the utilities on Belknap.
Okay.
But I think earlier I was also talking about the lighting and the landscaping.
Okay. So about a hundred thousand dollars.
On phase two.
Phase two.
What's phase one? I think that was what.
Yeah, so probably phase one was what we, we would need to know.
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and look at it, gentlemen.
Well, I mean, at, at some point, this gets into, we can justify utilities paying for everything. And I think that maybe is what Alan was getting at. I mean, now we've got to go start talking about streets. Well, we don't want to replace streets if we, if there's no need to replace utilities under them too. We want to get the most bang for our buck. And so then we're going to have the conversation of, well, if we're replacing utilities, why are we putting it in a bond and letting utilities, letting utilities pay for it?
Exactly.
And we get into that same, so why are we even doing streets in a bond? I guess is what I'm asking.
Well, if we're doing streets, why are we doing the utilities? See, that's what we talked about a while ago. If, if you've got to work on them, you need to do them concurrently.
Right.
And, and I think that's, that's how they got commingled to start with, was the fact that you need to do them both at the same time.
And I agree you do.
For, for the scale of economy and for the aesthetics and for the longevity of the street.
Right. And then I agree you do. You do it at the same time and get the most bang for your buck. But we're just having, I'm afraid we're going to end up talking in circles as far as who's paying for it. Who's paying for what and why?
You already are.
That's what we're doing.
Let's, let's get the ten cents to pay the twenty million dollars and let's go get the projects done. And then if we're able to give money back to the citizens because. Part of it's funded through the enterprise fund, which I am in a complete agreement with the mayor, the enterprise fund doesn't come close to paying for itself. We have to look at the rates. The rates have to match up. The enterprise fund should pay for what the enterprise fund does. But we're going to go get Long Street done, which citizens have wanted for thirty years.
Right.
They don't, they don't care what accounting bracket it's out of. Go get it done. And our job is to do it the ethical way. And to do it, and, and to do it right. And I agree that the enterprise fund should pay for the enterprise fund. And where we can utilize that, we should utilize that. But us arguing about which accounting bracket the, the money's coming out of, we're going to, we're. We're going to be here for three more hours. But I think that the conversation needs to be, are we okay with this amount of money? And are these the projects we want to do? And then let's go find a way to do it. And let's say it's ten cents. And in two years, we're able to drop that to seven and a half cents on there because the enterprise fund paid it or there's growth. Then the citizens are that happy with you. If you're transparent about what you're doing and they can see what you're, what you're improving and visual improvements of it, there's not going to have a problem. Most people will not have a problem with that.
But back to what Ricky said though about going down the road, we don't have to repair, replace the street. Never do. We can live, we can live with just patching the holes in the street forever. Look at, pick a, pick a couple of streets. This happens all over town. When we decide to put a street in, it's because the utilities are at a failure. Or because we're growing our business like Harbin or something like that. Everything else is because the utilities is what's going to drive that decision about the street. Because we can always come back in with some more asphalt on top of it or do another. Slick skillet or that spray stuff that's been put on. It's, the street isn't, doesn't drive the utilities. Except for in projects where we're starting something that it's always the utilities. And when you're digging the utility, why not just go ahead and fix the street liner there? So I think the utilities do drive that discussion more than the streets do. Yes. But your point is good. Well, it takes, so what your suggestion is, let's just do the ten cents, give them the projects and say, we're going to do streets where the difference is, depending on how we fund it. Fund those, those other little art things we've been discussing here. We're going to do fifteen million bucks or twenty million bucks. And here's how much streets we can pay for out of it.
And if we can stretch, and we can take that five point two million dollars and do more because utilities is a bigger chunk of that.
Good point.
And we're able to do more.
Y'all okay with that?
But we're going to spend all five point two of that on streets and allocate and show it somewhere.
Can you do that without identifying?
Yeah, that's the, you have to identify.
If you do that, you don't identify specific projects.
And you can't borrow any money on any street.
You cannot borrow money.
You can't say streets.
You can't just generically say streets. You have to say between this.
But I think we can identify three streets to put on there that can eat up five point two million dollars.
Sure. But that's what we've got to do, Lord.
Why don't we let, pretty quick, why don't we let city staff look at that and bring us a recommendation what those streets are?
Where, if you could spend five point two million dollars, Nick, on streets?
Well, I guess I'm, at this point then, I would be in favor of looking at a tip or whatever for the downtown rehabilitation. But I, I mean.
The tip, does tip only include sales, I mean, ad valorem includes sales as well?
Yes.
It includes both.
It does both.
You can do a combination.
The only thing is what you have to look at when you're doing a tip, you have to look, is there going to be an increment there in order to support the amount of money you want to spend?
Correct.
And typically, you need to have a project that's going to increase that increment of taxes in order to pay for it. You can't just, yeah, there's a general, yeah, things that go up to one, two, three percent, something like that. But if you, you want to. Do a project like that and you're going to spend three million, five million, ten million dollars, whatever it is, then there needs to be a specific project. That's going to increase your increment of taxes that much.
Let me say this, I would not be in favor of spending, I, I would be cautious about spending four point two million dollars on downtown if we don't think that it's going to be incrementally successful. We need to, we need to stop this conversation immediately.
Agreed.
Maybe so.
I agree, but I think, but I think can you not be the spark, this is the spark that kicks it off? And then you have the TIF come on above it to do the rest of the phases. This is just phase one and phase two that, that allow it.
Well, and I guess, I guess what it would do is it would.
I mean, you could TIF every.
The tide will go out and we'll find out if we're wearing swim shorts or not because we'll know whether the citizens even care about revitalizing downtown by putting it on the bond.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I just spoke with our bond attorney. Actually, everybody's right. The, the utility, the utility portion of, of the general fund is utility relocation. But if you are not relocating your, your underground utilities, then yes, it does have to be out of the utility fund. So, it, it, let's say Nick. Was doing Columbia Street and back in the day, those two pipes were not five feet apart, separated both apart and up and down. That would be a utility relocation. But if it's just to replace old pipes, then it would be a utility. Repair replacement, whatever we call it. And it would have to come from the utility fund. So. And I asked him specifically about the Long Street project and he said, yes, it may sound like you're splitting hairs. But if you tear up the street to, to do your repairs, then yes, you can charge it all to the utilities. So long as all of the street's torn up.
So interpret that for the question about Columbia to College in Belknap.
We will have to ask Nick to go back and take the utility pieces out, provided he does not have to relocate the utilities. But, but to take that out and that would be done through the utility fund, either with a CO or, or through fund balance or retained earnings.
Which is what Justin's question was asking.
Yes.
So what that means then is, of the seven hundred fifty thousand bucks we did for that downtown project, we're going to have to pull the utility part out of it. And let the utilities pay for that. And then the bond would only include what's left over.
Correct.
Okay.
He said you can do things like sidewalks, lighting, things like that. Ancillary projects, as he put it. But, but the Attorney General's office has been very specific about whether you're relocating utilities or replacing utilities in, in a general fund bond. And I made the comment, well, ten years ago, we did it this way. And he said, you're right, ten years ago, you would do it that way. This is the way it's done now.
Okay, so your question is, let's just go ahead and let them decide how much that money's going to be. We're going to borrow, we're going to ask the citizens for twenty million bucks and what the difference is going to be as a street project. Based on however much we have to pay the utility fund out of it. Is that what you're saying?
I mean, if this is the projects that we want.
We have to agree on all of this.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Well, we go back and look at those agreements. So is that what we're saying? So our appetite's ten cents?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good number.
I mean.
I mean.
So back, I guess, a little bit to you. I mean, I'm sorry, there's not simple, easy solutions to this stuff. So let's just end that. Back to your point. Twenty million feels good. What does that get us? Where does that get us in ten years? How does doing twenty million today help us in ten years as a city?
Well, it would only take, my opinion is it only takes care of five million dollars in street repairs. And twenty, and we're supposed to be spending two point seven five a year to maintain a B or C average or whatever. So we're not, we're going, it won't be as bad in ten years, but it will be worse than it is today.
Well, and then what's the next project?
If you're going to be injecting, we're going to still keep a million dollars a year in street repairs.
Well, that, that's correct. A million bucks in street repairs.
We're looking at more though because we've got.
Instead of having twenty million dollars in street repairs for twenty years, you're going to have twenty-five million.
Well, actually, the number of twenty-seven is what we have so far to fix the current streets. Now, new streets is, I think that's what the study did.
So you're injecting five to seven million dollars here.
Correct.
In this.
But you're going to wait twenty years. You're going to wait twenty years to pay that note off. And so you've got twenty more years of repairs. Which is twenty times two point seven million bucks a year. You're fixing seven million dollars in the whole now.
Well, I mean, I guess my, my thing is, is if it's an all a cart deal anyways, do we need to identify some additional ones? And let the voters decide where, where is their appetite?
Half of that's going to go for two things, for the multi-use facility and the Boski River Trail. So if you do twenty million, assuming it's approved. Half of that is, is gone for those two projects. And the balance of it is going to be split between the others. So what do you get? Okay, you get those two things, both of which I think the voters will approve and be enthusiastic about. The other things are going to be the, in my mind, the question marks about what, what is, what will they agree to?
Well, and then what's next?
Well, in, in ten years from now, somebody that's sitting here, it won't be me and you, but somebody that's sitting here is going to say, okay, we've got ten years left on this. And we need to issue another. At that point, it's going to be thirty million. Because twenty won't touch what we're doing with twenty today.
The other part of the conversation we had a couple of weeks ago in our last workshop is, is asking Nick, you know, we can't put. We can't put thirty million dollars worth of street projects on there because we have to have a bundle in a certain period of time and we simply don't have the resources to do that. Even if the voters approve it. Is that correct?
Right, it's a bandwidth issue, but be careful. If you allocate all this money to streets, again, if you put the equipment on there to redo the street, you will crush the utilities in a lot of these locations. So.
The utilities do need to drive the street. So we need to be looking at utilities that need to be done in crisis.
We cannot go repay Long Street without crushing the utilities underneath it. That's why we have to do the utilities.
Right. Let's get back to the question again, the funding of it. So. So are we, so are we, as an a la carte, you're correct, citizens are going to choose what they want to do. So do we put in, do we have, put out there another ten million bucks?
I mean, you're saying thirty instead of twenty?
That's, that's what Justin was asking.
I'm just asking what's the next steps.
If they get the tickets.
But, okay, so, I mean, because all this does is, this checks these off, but, I mean, we've got to get back to work right away.
Nothing.
Nothing keeps you from going for another bond issue in another year or two years or three years down the road.
And with the grocery, this is, this is, can be the spark and the kick off our butts and actually doing some of it, the spark to do it again where we've added. Five hundred million to our ad valorem value and then we can go do the next thing.
You may come back in a year.
Every one of these things, in my opinion, is going to help generate revenue. To, to this, maybe you can argue the Boski River Trail, but that's a, but the rest of this stuff is going to raise our ad valorem and raise our sales tax.
What you're saying is, if it, if it generates growth, you might come back in two or, or in three years and get twenty million for seven cents instead of ten cents.
But none of this stuff's going to be cheaper today in a year than that.
Correct. You may, you may lose all the inflation.
But at least we're, we're moving the ball forward where a lot of this stuff, the ball's.
And I think that's.
Ball's stuck.
Yeah, I think that it has been stuck for years. It's time to, I think that's what we were elected for. Yeah, we're, these are tough decisions, but I think we were elected to show that we can improve the community. And I don't mean just watering streets and talking about the, the center and the, and the Boski River Trail stuff to make this community look a lot nicer and a lot better. I hear all the time about people say, gosh, couldn't, wouldn't it be nice to look like Granbury? Well, Granbury looked a whole lot worse than Stevensville did 20, 30 years ago, 30 years ago. A lot of these communities that you see right now, they just started about 30 years ago. They started improving their stuff. Well, so we're a little bit behind the schedule. We could do this, but you're going to have to start with something. We start with 20 million and we show the voters and we show the people in this community what you can get. And we start that spark and it, and, and that will create additional interest and it will create more people looking at downtown and more people looking at this community and building new developments outside and so forth. Then the next time we come around, say, look, we need to do another 20 million dollars, you know, three years, five years down the road to do it. The voters say, well, look, we got our money's worth last time.
Just downtown to Bell, look, the Burdles.
Yeah.
They just had a hundred and fifty, 200 million dollar investment in their downtown.
That's right.
They were Stevensville tenure, I mean, they're closer, but they were.
They didn't even have half of what we've got.
But I, you know, that's the spark that if we do this, we, we, we show that we're invested in, in, in these areas, I think, that are growth. And then you're right, Justin, it's got to be something that's a living, breathing, getting better every year, is what I hope to vote for in future councils when we're off of this, that they're continuing to look at that every year. And where can we see projects and continue to grow and use TIFs and PIS and, and all this stuff? Because I'm, I'm, I'm very optimistic about our TIF and, and the revenue that's going to come into that. I think those numbers, just in sales, I think those numbers are low and I think that's going to outperform and we're all going to be very happy with that. I, I truly believe that's what's going to happen with that. It's going to allow us probably, that's why I'm, I'm a fan of doing this, the TIF with the Hartman, because it's going to pay for that. And you know, and then you've got the growth that happens there. But I, I, honestly, we could do 40 million dollars and spend it on things that need to be done right now. I don't know if we could spend it in that timeframe, but, but I mean, there's definitely that amount of projects. But I think 20, 25, I'm fine with that being a la carte, being a little higher, if there's projects we need. But I think that's a good number that I think citizens, I think we could get done. I think we could go out and talk to people and show them, here's the amount of money it's going to cost you, but this is what you're going to get for, for you.
Mr. Mayor. I think, and, and I'm not absolutely sure, but I believe that even if the voters approve 20, 40, however million dollars, it, it isn't, it does not have to be a single issue. You can say, we're going to do 10 million dollars worth of projects this year and sell those bonds. Come back another year, we're going to do 10 million dollars on, on these, on these. You can separate them out for a period of time.
Especially if told you to stack those.
Yeah, you, yeah, you can stack them. The, the only problem I see with that is if you do it in three issues, then you got three issuance costs. You've got, you, you run the risk that, that interest rates will go up. There, there are several risks that you face, but, but it's better than selling 30, 40 million dollars worth of bonds and have it sit in the bank for five years because you don't have time to do that project and you're making those payments every, every, every month or twice a year is what you pay it. But keep in mind, that is a strategy to issue only so many bonds until maybe you get almost through with this project and then you, you have another project, but again.
Of the 20, how much can be, how much can be done and in what timeframe? And we're really talking about 35, right? As part of the infrastructure.
Yeah. I mean, you're really talking about 35 million.
So how, I mean, how much of that can be done and what timeframe?
Utility funds contracted, it's our, it's just supervision, is that right, correct?
There's a lot more than that, but, but yes.
You're accurate.
Well, that's part of the project, you have a question presenting to council here in a little bit, asking for some positions to do that, some of that supervision.
And you, and you really are looking at 40 million, not 35 million. If you do the tax increment finance expansion for Harbin Drive South, that's 5 million dollars. So add that to the 15 million and to the 20 million.
40 million dollars.
You got 40 million dollars.
So to answer this question, how much can you do? As much as we tell you.
How much does it, how long is it rope? How much does a car cost? I give you all of it.
I think you could do all of it if you had adequate staffing, that may be the issue.
Well, that's part of what we're talking about later tonight too, is that question. So let's assume that gets approved, had many apps, can we buy one tonight? With that in mind, how much of this, get back to his point is, stack those notes. And we borrow, we get approval for 10, we borrow 10, another 10, another 10. At what point can you spend that, that fund?
Those two positions are only for after it goes to construction to make sure it gets put in the ground for it. To, to make those field changes, those are, that's all that those two positions do. So it doesn't help us get it out the door at all. My point would be, that has no bearing on how, how quickly we get the amount of work.
Okay.
Those, those positions are inspectors basically to, to make sure that the work is done correctly. But there's so much other work that our city engineers, when we have.
Well, maybe that's the question is, what does it take to do that?
It's going to take a couple of project managers, at least, at least a city engineer, if not another one.
Then my suggestion is that you work with the committee chair of Congress and ask for that and personal director asks that question.
Yes, sir.
And so the question then is, with the right amount of staff, how much of that project can you get done? In what timeframe?
How long would it take us to do 40 million dollars worth of projects?
40 million is on those streets.
It's not all 40, I mean, well filled, Long Street.
Right, so the well fields are closer back already.
That's a good point.
Without having looked, just the first time I've seen this list, you're probably looking at. Five years. Start to finish on everything.
Would build any inflationary costs into the.
And I would hope that would be.
So, no. So, okay, you got a year.
And, and well filled and some of that stuff is ongoing, but if we, if this was approved in May. How long for like a Long Street? Are we, are we basically on like a Harbin timeline?
Right, if, if you said, Nick, I want you to go get Long Street done, Alexander to Grant. This one is going to take us probably nine to 12 months to get through design and then nine to 12 months for construction. So you're looking at a couple of years, you're going to have two years there.
And, and so if, if we were to get this all approved and we said, okay, we've got Long Street, but we've got the downtown area going at that, do you have the bandwidth to be running two, three streets at a time?
We, we do, I mean, we're, we're working on the downtown revitalization right now. We're going to have, we have going right now, but we're about to kick off the GLO project, which is $2 million in stormwater.
Right.
And then we're going to have Harbin going at the same time. So, yes, we're going to find a way to do it. We're just going to be then while we do it.
I guess you mentioned that also the Grand Street water sewer.
Yes, yes. So you're talking five years start to finish, finish the construction, not, not necessarily getting through all the projects. Yes, because I think it's probably takes a couple of years for the design and then the construction of everything. We're only going to be able to do so many designs the first year.
And not all the projects, Justin, just the ones that are listed here. There's a, there's a number of other projects that are not listed here that we need to be working on. And that's what Doug was talking about, the millions of dollars in infrastructure repair that we need to be working on. But I think Mr. Williams is talking about the projects that we have listed here, the well field and long and then the sewer repairs. But there's a significant other number of projects that we need to be mindful of at the same time.
Sure, day-to-day operations, I've probably spent three hours not on capital projects today. And did whatever time I spent in here today.
Why don't we let this man get to work?
We'll be back in a couple hours.
Look, you're the one that made that.
You called him down here.
Okay, so the question at this point is, we felt comfortable with 10 cents, are we willing to put an a la carte kind of thing together to go to 30 or something else and do what Alan mentioned earlier, just stack those projects to that? So it'd be, if it's 30 million, you could do 10 million, 10 million, 10 million, that was your example, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then let the citizens decide.
Do you know what the timeframe is on that, Alan? If you, if the voters approve selling bonds, do you have a timeframe in which you have to sell those bonds by, from that issue?
There is one, but I don't know what it is. I, I think it's a, I think it's a, I think it's a long period. Now, whether it's 10 years or 15 years, I don't know, but there is.
There's, there's a window.
I thought we already said 28.
Can, can you use bond monies for staffing?
No, sir. I would, I would.
Project management?
I, I would caution against that. Unless they're contract personnel, because personnel is an ongoing cost.
Right.
That if you roll it into a bond for, say, five years, then at the end of that five years, you've got, you, you've bought those employees essentially. That's the reason that we try not to get the fast grants from the federal government with police and fire. Because in those grants, federal government pays them for three years, but you have to promise after that to keep them on for three years, five years, whatever it is. And so you go from having all this extra personnel to you got to pay for it now. And so what I would suggest is that, that you don't pay for a, a continuing cost with one-time revenue stream. Because it's.
But that's part of the problem we have with the way we allocate overhead anyway. So we could come back and allocate overhead to that project for those positions or those kinds of services.
We could.
For, for now on and bill it back and it being employed and the funding source come from that, whatever project we're doing.
So long as that project, yes, sir, so long as that project is ongoing.
And that's part of the problem why we have, why costs of government so high, because we never want to get rid of somebody when the project needs gone. But you're saying if the project need continues, we're going to have funding sources either through bonds or through borrowed money or something.
Well, if you've got a, if you've got a 20-year bond and then in, in a year, you're going to issue, you know, 10 million and then a year, you're going to issue 10 more.
You've got 20 years.
Now you've got 20 plus 10 is 30 and then the next 10, you do 10 more, that's 40.
I think you've had it, I think, I think it becomes 10 years, 10 years and 10 years, you've got 30 years.
So we've got 30 years, which is longer than the average employee stays with a, a job anyway.
You borrow, you borrow money for 20 years to pay for the employee needed for five.
But that employee.
15 years later, you're still paying, paying for that employee that hasn't done work in 15 years.
That's the point. No, you have, you have work for that employee to do.
It just may not be that same.
It might, it may be.
Right, but you.
The next project is what you flip him to from A to B to C to D. And you have that trained, qualified employee available to move from this job to this job to this job and rather than go out in the, in the workforce and try to find another one in three years or five years or whatever. I understand what you're saying and I understand what Mr. Barnes is saying. Have to be careful when you borrow money for employees, but when you're talking long-term like this, I don't, probably not 100%, but you might consider funded part of the staffing issues out of the bond proceeds. Which increases the cost, but at the same time, if you get qualified people, and I think Mr. Williams will agree, if you get good people and you keep them, that saves you money in the long run.
Okay, I'm going to, we have 27 minutes to finish this project because at 4:30, we have a personal committee meeting and then 5:30, a city council meeting. So the question is, are we going to do an a la carte and go as much as 30 million? Or are we going to do 20 million and just figure out the 10 cents and we'll come back and do something later?
I'm good with the 20 million, I just, I guess, just so that I understand, so we are pulling Harbin.
Putting it over in a tip.
Off of the, this asset of the bond.
Which we, but, and we have already paid for the services for the TIF for that to be done.
Right.
We just need to.
Right.
I think we've used that.
We changed it a lot.
Because we developed the TIF and then we did 1B and then we did 1C, the cost to, to expand them is almost the same as it is to create them. I, we, I, I'll get you an answer on how much it was.
So the question you're asking, you're saying you're comfortable with 10 cents and you're, and with 20 million, we're pulling 5 million out of it or 5 point something out of it.
So is there another project based on the information we received from Freezing Nichols? That we haven't discussed yet?
Projects, yeah, discussed.
And that's a stormwater, utility.
Right. It's, it's.
I think, I think we're at a point where we don't know what we, we've got to have the utility breakdown before we know about the TIF.
Past this.
Do you understand that question?
Yes, sir. Nick, you understand.
Multi-use, good. Boski River, if that's desired.
Downtown.
Even downtown?
You're okay with those, we're all okay with those. Yeah.
I mean, outside of that, I think you go, we got to have a list of projects and this is what you can do general fund and this is what it's going to cost the enterprise. Decide what else to put in.
One thing that just came to mind, and I want to caution you, and this, this may be a, a Nick and Alan thing rather than a council thing at this point. You do not want to go to the, to the voters and say, we want to, to bond $5 million on streets. Because if you do that.
We're going to say.
Asking for the specific.
We need specific projects.
I agree. That's what you suggested.
And I think that's what you asked Nick and them to bring back is to bring back, if you've got 5.2 million. Besides long, what would you tuck?
A list of projects.
Six million or.
What would you prefer?
A five and a half or less.
So give us a date when that can happen, Alan, if we're going to get.
And I think that's extremely important, that's why I think long's important to do with this because of where we're.
You go on the clock, January 11th, or January 12th and end date is February 11th.
So, so we have one week.
Special preference to enter person.
Got a week before it starts, yes, sir.
Before it starts, so when can you bring the information back to us?
I'm going to depend on Nick to, to get us information this week, right?
I can get you a list of projects and their approximate cost.
And break out the utility.
Break out the utility.
Are y'all okay with Monday or Tuesday next week doing a Zoom meeting to get finalized this?
I'm going to be here.
Yeah.
Here, Zoom, whatever.
Okay, well, just do a Zoom meeting next week. When's the next council meeting?
19th.
14th?
The.
19th.
19th.
Utility at the committee meetings, the 19th.
When's the next council meeting, the 20th, the 2nd of February, that's too late.
No. You have till the 12th. The 12th of February, 11th.
The 12th is the last day of call the election, we typically call the election the first council meeting in February to the second, but we do have till the 12th.
Okay, so let's back up a week then, so that's the 19th. We can have all this ready with all the answers for everybody on the 19th. That's, that's two weeks, that's, surely we're good for that.
Our committee meetings are the 21st, aren't they?
No, the council committees are on 19th.
Two weeks from today.
19th.
Okay, what's, what is a week from today, the 12th?
Yes.
And there's, didn't seem to be anything on the calendar for the 12th. So we're going to call a meeting, a work session that finalizes on the 12th? Everybody okay with that? Do it at 5:30, like normal, or do you want to do it in the afternoon?
I said it 5:30.
I understand some of these deals, it didn't come, I understand that. So we're going to do it 5:30 on the 12th, we'll have a call, be a Zoom call if necessary or in person. I'll have to be on Zoom, so let's just do it by Zoom. And then we're going to have a, we'll have, and would you send the information to us prior to that? So we had, so any other, so we got any other questions? So y'all have answers, we'll have what we did today where we don't know, we don't know.
Yep.
I'd rather have it in person, Mayor, if we could.
We're going to do a Zoom, you can be here if you'd like, we're going to do a Zoom call.
I'd rather, yeah.
Then I'm, I'm going to chair the meeting and I can't be here, so we're going to do it by Zoom, it'll be a Zoom conference. So you can come here if you want to do it, be on the Zoom, it's fine.
If you have any additional questions, please get them to me as quickly as you can so Nick and I can spend some time to, to work through them. Nick is, is working with Techs Doc yesterday, today and, and probably now, tomorrow. So. So we need to get your questions as quickly as we can. We'll try to get the answers out to you by the end of this week, hopefully. If not, it'll be Monday, but we will get them out before next week.
Okay, so we're, what we're telling them is 20, 10 cents is what we're looking at on add valorem, comfortable with that point. Don't care with everybody? So you got 10 cents to work with?
Got it.
All right. Any other points, questions you want to give them now that you want to talk about now, while they're here? While we're interrupting Nick, might as well interrupt you now.
We can find a way to interrupt him in.
Well, he's the most congenial guy. He's a, he's the one guy when everybody on the call and here to understand, Nick works from 10, 11 o'clock every night, every night, every night. To get this stuff done, that's his point.
For almost four years, the last thing I say when I walk out the building is go home, Nick.
Well, I've called him at 11 o'clock at night up here and said, get your butt out of the office.
Yes, sir, I've called him on the weekend and said the same thing.
Okay. I'm going to call, it is 4:09, I'll call this work session, close the work session, in our journal, I should say, is it work? And we'll meet back at 4:30 for a personal committee.